The zoning commission regular meeting for May 5th, 2022 is called to order at 7:28 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. For those attending virtually, if you would like to speak, just please raise your hand so that the proctor can open your microphone. Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Here.
Crew?
Here.
Zulo?
Excuse the absence.
Manley?
Here.
Spellman?
Here.
And the audience's trustee Augustine, trustee Asher, and zoning inspector Wilson. Trustees wedding is virtual. Thank you.
Perfect. Our first order of business is the review and approval of the zoning commission public hearing minutes from April 7th, 2022. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any suggested revisions to minutes? Okay, at this time I've entertained a motion to approve the zoning commission public hearing minutes from April 7th, 2022 as written.
So moved.
Moved by Spellman, seconded by Manley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. I'd like to review and approve the minutes of the zoning commission regular meeting minutes from April 7th, 2022. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any suggested edits to the regular meeting minutes?
I did have one. No amendments to it. I just had one question on page 15. There was a yellow highlighted recommendation of no on this parcel. It still goes to the township. Just kind of curious why that was highlighted in there.
When I'm doing it, if I can hear something so that I highlight it just so it gets special attention when it's being reviewed by all of you.
That should have been reviewed at the draft. We do a draft review prior to going out and it should have been removed after the draft review.
Gotcha.
Okay. No, thank you.
That's all.
All right, if there are no other edits to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning commission meeting minutes from April 7th, 2022 as written.
So moved.
By Crew, seconded by Manley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, the ayes have it. We'll begin with our review of the final site plan for the village at Hinckley Oats, which was formerly known as the senior housing project. This is, if you recall, we discussed this at our last meeting and there were a few items that needed to be addressed, so we tabled it until this meeting. Is there a representative from the developer that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Eric Allen, 4094 Preserve Run Circle, Medina, Ohio. I'm actually here on behalf of Ben Wienerman, who I believe you have been working with. I work with Ben at the Development Agency and Construction Agency in Medina. He couldn't make it tonight. He's filled me in on the review comments from April 7th. I can tell you that everything that was brought up has been addressed, as noted on the April 7th plans, but if there's any other questions, I can answer them to the best of my ability.
And just so we can go through what the major revisions or requests were, there was on the south side, a privacy fence, and it was initially proposed at six foot. The border zoning appeals had indicated that they wanted sufficient mounding along with fencing because of water drainage issues coming from the south side of the adjoining property. They felt that they could not put in mounding because they have to capture that water coming onto their property. So we suggested a request in an eight-foot privacy fence along that southern border, which they've complied with on the map. On the east side, and why don't I try to pull this up? So that you can see it as well. Do you want to share it? Perfect. On the east side, adjacent West 130th, they didn't meet our standards for the number of trees and shrubs that are required within the building setback. The requirements are five shade trees for every 130 feet thereof and 20 shrubs for every 100 feet or fraction thereof excluding the drive. They have excluding the drive, I think slightly under 500 feet on that West 130th side. And they've proposed, by my count, 34 trees and 120 shrubs. And that's not including what is in the signage area. So I feel that they have adequately met the requirements for the landscaping on the West 130th side of the property. My only question on the West 130th side is there is a split rail fence that was proposed for both West 130th and the center road entrance. And that last meeting, Mr. Wienerman had indicated that that would probably only extend along a portion of those two entrances. I'm curious, now that you've changed your landscaping, if you intend to extend that split rail.
Well, he did not mention anything about the split rail fence at the entrances. However, and Tom, did you put this together? Yeah, could you?
Tom Ludwig, 4364 West 219th Street, Fairby Park. I, there is a split rail fence running north along West 130th Street, but running south, there is not because of the detention basin that's on that side. But there is.
Towards the other B1 parcel where the proposed district control mark might be.
That would be heading north. Yes, yeah, so it would be a fence that way, but not heading south.
Perfect. They've also included the sidewalk that was requested at our last meeting leading into that B1 adjoining parcel for future development of that B1 adjoining parcel. Looking at the center road entrance, again, they've incorporated the five-foot proposed sidewalk that we had requested. They've also significantly increased the number of trees. Once you factor in the road, I think that that's slightly under 200 feet of frontage there. And they have proposed 14 trees and 42 shrubs excluding what's at the entranceway. So I believe that that also now meets the requirements of the resolution. Moving along the western border near the entrance, we requested that they show the mounding that's going north to south at that entryway. They have now incorporated that mounding. It actually extends pretty far along that western, southern boundary right there. They planned to not show the footage of that mounding. We did request clarification on that mounding and that mounding is three to four feet. So they'll have three to four feet. We'll ask that you do provide a final plan that does show that in detail if possible.
Just for the record, I'll say that. That was one thing that Mr. Wienerman told me about, and that is correct. At three to four feet, the note will be on the final plan. Just so, just for the record, you can keep that.
Thank you. Along the border adjacent to the residential properties, it's very close, extends from the western corner of the property towards that north-south boundary. We expressed concern that they did not provide enough shade trees or screening along that border. We requested that they add mounding along with a privacy fence and trees. And they've, I think, fully accommodated that. They've added two foot of mounding. On top of the mounding will be a six-foot privacy fence giving you eight foot of total height. And then they are incorporating actually significantly more trees along the residential side of that fence because they now have not only Norway spruce, but they've added some red bud trees as well as it looks like some arborvitae trees along that fence. So I think that that will do a much better job of blending the fence in with the residential properties. And then the final item is behind the maintenance shed on the West 130th side. So right here is the maintenance shed and they had no trees behind the maintenance shed. And so we asked them to do some level of screening there. And they incorporated five, six-foot arborvitae trees behind the maintenance shed to kind of block that. So I, I see no other issues or concerns with this proposal. Those were the only items I think we had opened, left open in our last meeting. I do see Mr. Bendoff here, and I know that this is the one project that he's interested in. Mr. Bendoff, did you have any comments or before we? Yes, please.
See what he did to his property. Larry Bendoff, 2666 in the road. My main concern was the height. And all I recall is when we first brought this up, that mounding was not thought of as a good idea by not only the township, but also by Ben Wienerman himself. I think that was the first comment he made. And all I know is from talk with Davy Tree, the surveyor, when he was out there, I asked him point blank, I said, you know, is mounding any good? And he said, he said, the only reason mounding is good is for the, to hide something. He said, it's not, definitely not going to help water problems. I don't know. He's the surveyor and, and the fact that you're going to put in mounding, I don't see why you don't just go with the, I'm glad to hear that you're going to give me the eight feet, but to put it on top of a mound, you know, I'm worrying about the, the possible flooding effects. I don't know why we couldn't just do the eight-foot privacy fence and then the spruce trees on both sides with the, and I'm glad you added the bushes because obviously the trees, you know, again, I refer to that infamous page 69. At this point, I mean, you know, I would just, that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Thank you. You know, I will say that we don't necessarily have authority to require an eight-foot fence. And the developer had spoken and said that they don't want an eight-foot fence for a few reasons, one of which is they don't want to add that additional height to make it feel more closed off. And then also it's the cost of the eight-foot fence. And so at our last meeting, I think Ms. Crew did a great job by making a recommendation to get that two-foot fence and to give us the eight-foot height that you want. Because if you remember, our requirement is only a six-foot. So we got that extra two foot that way. In terms of drainage, I honestly, I think that that mound is ensuring that there's no water flowing from this property onto your parcel because there's a two-foot high barrier that prevents water. So water is supposed to flow in that direction towards your property. That pond plus that barrier is almost guaranteeing that the water cannot flow from their parcel onto your parcel.
I want to go on the record as saying, in the 26 years I've been here, there has not been a drop of water in my drainage ditch. And yet, again, I'm on the apex. Even the water that comes from the west is stopped by the, by the lot next to me because the drainage system has actually corrupted itself. I mean, it's just broken down. And then, as I mentioned, the two lots to the east of me, the wooded lands that have never been developed. I'm going by what Kim Solak, my neighbor, said, and she's, she's still putting up with the, with the, with the outright flooding of her entire yard. He showed, and you have pictures to show that, I mean, when she told me literally you could drive a canoe through it, I thought she was kidding, but I saw the pictures. And I'm just concerned, I mean, that if, you know, there's been talk about, it's not going to happen, it's a hundred-year idea. All I want to know is if, and, and the last time I heard, if this does occur, who is responsible for any damage to my property, whether it be the driveway or if it goes onto my land, I've got a septic system up front that's all under grandfather. I just want to preserve, I just want to live here in peace. And, you know, this is the battle, I'm not going to argue with it. My next concern is going to be what's going to happen to the properties next to me. And I understand a pride one owns one lot, which is next to Kim Solak's. She's got two properties. If that's what, that puts me in a bad position, obviously, because on the west side, I have one, B1. And then all, even in 2017 or 18, when I, when we were asked to change it, I stayed R1 despite the fact that everybody told me, oh, your land's going to go up in value. I don't care about value. I care about what, and it's not, I keep referring to page 69. And, and the fact that you're saying it to six foot was okay, it says a minimum. But the point is, it says no, no less than six feet. So that should leave it open and say, well, what's wrong with, you're at the six feet, why not go seven or eight feet? I was going to say 10 feet and I thought that's way out of line. Okay, but I still have concerns about the mounding and, and I just wanted on the record that if there's flooding, you can take pictures of it a lot, even with this rain now, the raining weather we've had. My land is dry. I just want to keep it that way. Progress is progress and so be it. Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Bendoff. If there are no other comments from the board, I'd entertain a motion to approve the final site plan as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Manley. All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Go ahead. I have one more question. I just have one question about the height of the spruce trees on either side of the fence. Are they going to be the eight feet? Correct, they're six-foot spruce trees and then they'll be the mounding that they'll be sitting on. So that will give you your eight foot. And Norway spruce, I'm not a tree guy, but I think that's about 16 inches per year or so that they're going to grow. So Norway spruce are pretty fast growing trees. Anything else? Perfect. Trying to get up this. Taking it on the screen that doesn't exist.
Oh, I know why I moved, so I could see the people. That's what it was. Technology is great when it works.
I went through all this work today trying to make this as succinct as I could. And now I can't even get it on the right screen. And I only have one screen open, so I don't know where this document is going. Trustee Augustine, can I send you this and you can display it? Would that be possible?
Flip charts.
Packs of materials.
Chalkboards.
I really don't understand where this is disappeared to because it's coming up and it's moving to a screen that doesn't exist. Actually, let me try to, let me see if this works first before I do it. Because I might be able to share the presentation. Look at that. Well, did it work?
Well, it screamed so far.
No, it says my screen is paused. Oh, that makes no sense. Okay, I'll stop sharing and turn it over to you, trustee.
You're going to email it to me?
I already did.
We know what it looks like.
How many people are in?
Seventeen? I mean, look, it's opening and closing.
What are you doing?
I'm opening up this powerpoint. I made a better.
We need a four-year-old.
Can you minimize or shrink your screen so you can see it? There it is.
No, that's her doing that.
You want me to get it into your slideshow?
Perfect.
Vote and you just tell me next?
That's fine.
I'm just here to serve you, Marcus.
Thank you. Go ahead. Next. So I tried to make a PowerPoint presentation so we could try to move through this relatively quickly and we can refer back and forth to any of these slides. Or if you have any other things that you want me to pull up, I can try to pull them up. Hopefully you can see this. Go ahead. So I just wanted to very quickly summarize the results of the public hearing. We heard from 18 residents through emails or through the public hearings. Many residents spoke two times at the public hearings and then also submitted emails. So this is total number of residents that spoke. 18 residents spoke or sent emails. How do those 13 residents oppose the redistricting and five ask questions and provide comments, but didn't necessarily voice their opinion one way or the other? Please go ahead. So the process steps from here are laid out in the Ohio revised code 519.12. The county or regional planning commission provides a recommendation. That recommendation is considered at the public hearing held by the township. The township zoning commission, within 30 days after that hearing, is required to recommend the approval or denial of the proposed amendment or the approval of modification or submit the recommendation and, sorry, and submit the recommendation along with the motion to the board of trustees. The board of trustees then are required to also set a public hearing within 30 days and the date of the receipt of the recommendation. And then within 20 days of their public hearing, they have to adopt or deny the recommendations of the zoning commission with or without modifications. So that's going to be the process from here. Next slide, please. We've already, I've already summarized the Medina Planning Commission report, so I won't do that again. The Medina, the Planning Commission did approve or make the, they approved of the proposal to rezone from R1 to B2, 92, and their comments are provided in their own Stafford report. Next slide, please. The ORC 519.02 provides the guidance with which we are to review things. And I apologize for some of the small print, but again, this is the Ohio revised code, so you're welcome to review it yourself. The relevant part, except as otherwise provided in this section, in the interest of the public health and safety, the board of town, the board of township trustees may regulate by resolution in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The location, height, bulk, number of stories, size of buildings and other structures, including tents, cabins, percentage of lot areas that may be occupied, setback, building lines, sizes of yards and other open spaces, and density of population, the uses of the buildings and other structures, and so on and so forth. They then go through other things that the township is able to do. All of it is required to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. There we go. This is figure two of the comprehensive, of the 2015 comprehensive plan. Basically, at that time, they created a heat map that showed where the goal is supposed to be, where the residential districts are supposed to be. One of the items that's mentioned in this figure is enhanced the town square. And I'll read that entire, in that entire section. Hinckley Town Center is the social and civic hub of the township. Here, residents generally want to see a higher level of quality buildings and public spaces and amenities, along with the additional small-scale businesses to serve the community. Figure 2.4 shows the desire for both growth and preservation in the area, indicating a desire for some expansion while keeping the town, the small-town character. Next slide, please. I've provided a copy of the future land use map in relation to our current zoning. I know it's small, we'll zoom in on the, the school district. Next, the important part to note, no, go ahead, sorry, not next. Next, we'll zoom in. The other way. There we go. I think that the important thing to note on the future land use map is there's actually a pretty significant proposal of expansion within the B1 district along West 130th. And there's also a more moderate, but still expansion of the town center, which the reference to town center in the comprehensive code is the town, the town center is referenced within the comprehensive plan, not town center as currently zoned. So I want to make sure that we're clear on that because that will come into play. Next slide, please. Attack, then this is a zoomed in view of the future land use map as applicable to the school parcel. The one on the left was actually pulled from the staff report yesterday. As it shows, a majority of the parcel is proposed on the future land use map to be within the B2 district. There is a small sliver on the eastern side that was proposed to remain residential. On the left-hand side is the marking that shows the school park property with the B1 district outlined in red. There is a small section, as I said, 100 foot north and south behind the school that is owned residential. And on the east side is also zone residential. The rest of the area around it is own business, B2. Next slide, please. Objectives and goals. This is objective and goals, action item ED 1.1. Attract new neighborhood commercial uses to the town center area as designated on the future land use map. So that is a suggestion, at least in that particular objective, to incorporate additional B2 within the town center. Next slide, please. This is from the public input and there's two key themes that I wanted to note here. One said, improve the town center but limit expansion. And the second one said, diversify the tax base but in limited areas. When you look through that, and I'm going to go through a quick history of some of the prior comprehensive plans slash master plans, when they're talking about how you diversify the tax base, they're really talking about the increase of some sort of commercial development, whether it's in the industrial district or in the business districts. The other thing to note is that it says limit expansion. It doesn't necessarily say no expansion and we'll get some of the language of that moving forward. Go ahead, next slide, please. So I like history and so I like to see how the language has evolved over time. And so I actually looked at almost all of the comprehensive plans since they started. And so the first comprehensive plan, I think, was the 1960 comprehensive plan. And that one, and again, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. The plan that we're using for our review is actually the 2015 comprehensive plan. Again, I'm just looking at how language evolved. The 1960 comprehensive plan regarding Hinckley Center, which ultimately then became this area, said, "At the present, Hinckley Center is the focus of the commercial, educational, and governmental activity in the township. Its location at the intersection of the township's two most important highways makes it the most accessible stop for all residents of Hinckley. It is furthermore quite close to the township's geographic center. These factors are the basis for the comprehensive plan's proposal to reinforce Hinckley Center by maintaining it at its present location and having it expand there in scope and function to serve the future population." And so the question becomes, what does scope and function mean? When I look at the zoning regulation, I see really three ways because remember these comprehensive plans are really guiding the zoning regulations and how those are amended and changed over time. And so when I look at that, I really think of what we do in three criteria, in three different areas. I look at things that are aesthetic and height regulations and things of that nature. I look at the permit uses within a zoning regulation, within, you know, different zoning districts. And then I look at the size. And then I look at the size of the different zoning districts. And I have no doubt that function would mean the types of activities that are permitted within each zoning district. The word "scope," though, must mean something other than that. And that's where I think that, when you look at it, the scope is probably suggesting that you're going to see an enlargement of those, of the Hinkley Center. Next slide, please. By 1982, there's a significant shift. And actually, when you look at the 1982 Master Plan, they provide in some comments that there was a lot of disagreement about what the 1960 Plan had to say. And so by 1982, they actually made a very, very clear statement here. They said, and here, by the way, there were eighty commercially zoned acres. So the, the, the commer, the, the town center was slightly larger than it is now, which I think is sixty-four acres. But what they said is, "Further expansion of the commercial zone is probably not desirable due to the development limitations mentioned above." So by 1982, they seem to have had a pretty big shift. They did not want any expansion within the Hinkley Center. Nineteen ninety, next slide, please. Here's the 1993 Master Plan. And again, all of these are only being provided for historical sense, context, just to see how the language has shifted. In 1993, they very much retained the language that it appeared. They referenced the 1982 Plan, which says that "The community survey indicated that nearly two-thirds of respondents favored additional businesses in Hinkley without expanding the acreage of the current business zoning district." So quite clearly, we had very definitive language in the 82 and 93 plans that said, "No expansion." Next slide, please. This is the 2003 Master Plan update. The, and again, only for historical context. I want to refer to Chapter Three. Chapter Three says, and I've highlighted what I think are the most relevant sections. "Expansion in both the West 130th, 303 areas and the town center were supported by the survey. The town center area was noted as an area where expansion of retail uses should occur to make more of a traditional center for the township, including more retail services." It, it says, I think, thirteen suggested more restaurants and creating a better, and thirteen percent suggested more restaurants and creating a better image for the town. Seventy agreed that the good building design is important for the community's town center. They also said, and this is a different section, these are only snippets, that according to, let me minimize this because I can't see. Oh, oh, no.
You can see it from the screen.
According to the 2003 Comprehensive Survey, "A number of Hinkley Township residents support the creation of expanded, yet controlled, town center area. That is a local landmark and gathering place." So by 2003, we see something that's much more close to what we're seeing in the 2015, which is a pretty significant shift from the 1982 and 1993 plans, where there was absolutely no expansion. By twenty thirty, 2003, they were suggesting, "Expansion's okay. It needs to be limited and controlled." And I think that that's what we're seeing in the 2015 Plan as well. Next slide, please. "I want to briefly discuss the impact of wells and septic, mostly because one, the resident immediately to the east of, of the school raised some concerns about well, well water and septic on that par, parcel, especially because of the development that's proposed to go on the east side of his property." So I did contact the Medina County Health Department. It's Health Department that regulates it. And so the Medina County Health Department said, "With respect to wells, really, no one has jurisdiction over those. That's a free resource for everyone to use, and everyone has the same right and enjoyment to that well." However, with respect to septic, it's very different. With respect to septic, whenever there's a new business proposal that comes in, that proposal has to be submitted to the EPA. The EPA has to review that proposal and confirm that everything is in compliance with respect to the number of people that will be occupying the building and what the proposed uses for that building are. And they also said, "With large systems such as you see at the school, there's generally a number of hours, I think, per week that a person has to come and observe the septic system to make sure that it's properly dumping or disposing of the waste, uh, water as needed." So just wanted to briefly touch on that. I thought it was a very important point, and I wanted to make sure we talked about that as part of our process. Next slide, please. "Excess vacancies employed." This was another interesting topic that I wanted to explore a little more. And so I actually reached out and, and looked around to see what, what currently is available in Hinkley. And currently, there is, as far as I could tell, one leasable space and one of the office buildings currently available. And then there is one parcel within the business district that is, and I'm only referring to town center. There is one parcel within the business district that is currently for sale. It is a point six eight acre parcel there, next to the historical, historical society building. It's a point six eight acre parcel with one hundred foot feet of footage in comparison to the school's parcel, which is six point eight acres and four hundred and twenty feet affronted. So it's a, it's a pretty different, distinct difference there. The other thing that I, I wanted to mention is some of my own experiences with, with the business district in Hinkley. So a little over a year and a half ago, I was looking to move our law firm into Hinkley. We were moving almost entirely remote, and we went in a small office to set up shop. And it took me about five months to find a thousand square feet of available space. And so that's my experience. My other experience is, I actually made an offer for the Icon Building when it was for sale. The Icon Building is on the north section of Ridge Road. And I made an offer for that within thirty days of that building going up. I think I was the first offer. That offer was declined. Within fifteen days, approximately, they had a second offer. And that offer ultimately went into contingency, ended up closing months later without ever getting out of contingency. And it was a full, full asking price of $499. You never know what the underlying conditions are outside of the sale price, but the sale price is listed on the recorder's website as $499. So it was a full price ask within forty-five days on a business parcel. I thought that was pretty surprising. The other thing to note is, we heard from Mr. Woolney that this building, regardless of whether we rezoned it or not, is very likely to remain. And so one of the things that we do need to consider is, we, we, you know, my personal opinion is, I don't think that that building goes with the, you know, character of Hinkley at all. But that's my personal opinion, and that's not what I'm here to do. I'm here to provide an objective review of it. And so that building, if, if it's here to stay regardless, if it goes residential, what's going to happen more likely than not is someone's going to come in at a pretty low ball price, purchase that parcel with the building sitting there. At least, this is what I would expect. And it will sit there vacant until such time as we have a little bit of a different, you know, proposal or different set of trustees or wherever they feel like they can now come in and restore this. And for that period of time, that building is very likely vacant. You know, if, I, I don't know that if we maintain this R1, we have a much better chance of it being torn down than if we move it to R2 or, or vice versa. So, you know, we, we look at that and we say, "Well, the building, if we make this B2, there'll be extra buildings within Hinkley that are being unused and underutilized." But I just want to note that even if it's in our district, I think that there's a pretty good chance that this building is going to stay if we take this, what Mr. Woolney said, you know, to heart, which is that the school district is very likely not going to tear this down, and they'll wait to find a buyer and figure out what the buyer wants to do with it. Next slide, please. So this is, I think, an important concept because I'm, Mr. Wilson, Wilson actually spoke about this during the public hearing, but I want to make sure I point this out, too. So when I looked at this parcel, I looked at, at it to see, did it comply, if we move this to business, would it comply with our current zoning regulations in terms of variances and landscaping requirements and so on and so forth? And I identified a few issues with the current building. One is, there's a parking lot that's too close to what would become the residential boundary between the school and the, and the next, the eastward side. And then there's also some landscaping requirements. But what's important to note is, in subsection 6B9 of our code, we actually require that a site plan review shall be utilized by the Township Zoning Commission in reviewing proposals for uses permitted by right and by the Township Board of Zoning Appeals in reviewing proposals for conditional uses to assure that the proposals and the intent of this chapter in the Township Zoning Regulations are carried out. And then, and they should kind of carry it down, and we have some general criteria. "The proposal shall enhance and improve the character of the township and be appropriate and compatible with its surroundings provided herein. Buildings and structures and landscaping should be designed and located on the site and be of a scale and amassing to complement adjacent buildings and enhance the character of the surrounding area. Each building in development or redevelopment should be sensitive to adjacent buildings in terms of compatibility of proportion, style, color, and building materials. Specifically, within the Hinkley Town Center District, we have a pedestrian quality concern that we look at. Pedestrian activity shall be encouraged and safe pedestrian connections shall be provided between the principal uses, parking areas, and sidewalks. We also have a design of the building requirements. Design shall have the appearance of being at least two stories in height. This can be accomplished through use of pitched roofs, dormer windows, or architectural elements. When the wall of a building faces a public right-of-way or parking area or is within forty-five degrees of facing the public right-of-way, a minimum of fifty percent of such wall area between a height of two feet and eight feet above ground shall include a pattern of display windows and so on and so forth." My, my point in referencing this is, even if this is rezoned as business, there will be significant requirements imposed upon whoever wants to use that building for anything to come in, and if it's a permitted use, go through our process. And if it's a conditional use, go through the BZA before they can do anything with that parcel. So they're, they're not going to have a free-for-all to do whatever they want with that parcel. Next slide, please.
I've got a raised hand, do you want that?
We'll wait till, yeah. So the next, oh, there we go. So my final question is, if we look at Comprehensive Plan, and if, if you believe that there is suggesting some sort notion of a limited expansion, where does that expansion go? And so what I did on this map is I provided measurements of the B2 district in all directions. Because when I think of the town center, I think of a very pedestrian-friendly, walkable center where people can go from one building to the next, where they can have shops and restaurants and different things to do, and it's all within walking distance. So if we were to go north, assuming that you could go north, you are a minimum from Center Road of thirteen sixty-five on the west side, thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred and sixty-five feet before you would get to the nearest edge of whatever that next parcel is that's rezoned business. If you are on the right side of Ridge Road heading north, you're at least sixteen hundred and twenty-five feet before you get to a new parcel that could be rezoned business. If you go on the southern side, on the left side, you, I mean, that, there, there's no business there. And really, you have the township center, you have a park. So I don't think that you'd do residential or business on that side because it's already all residential, so why would you create some business over there? If you expand it on the south side of Ridge, sorry, on the east side of Ridge, that distance is sixteen hundred feet before you get to where you could have another parcel of B2. If we look at the school, you're four hundred and sixty-five feet from the western boundary of the school, eight hundred and eighty-six feet from the eastern boundary of the school, how close you are to town center. So all of these are looking from the center of town, how far out would the next business parcel go? Again, with the objective of keeping it as tight and compact as possible. So I, I, I think I'll leave it at that. I just wanted us to have some food for thought as we went through this. I tried to be as thorough as I could, looking at it from a bunch of different angles. But, you know, if you have any questions, comments, if you want to refer back to anything, if you want to refer to something else, I'm happy to try to navigate us through this. Mr. Ranley, you have anything?
Great job.
Thank you.
Bringing all the pieces together.
Thank you.
Agreed, very detailed.
Two months of chewing on this and trying to. And, and I'll say, I've looked at this ad nauseam, and, and I should comment on this, I will now, because I didn't. So one of the things that I did after the last meeting, at, you know, if you recall, at the very end of the last meeting, trustee Augustine had said, you know, "One of the options that we could do is have a planner come in and look at this." And so me looking at it from all sides, I thought, "Meh, maybe that's a prudent move." And so the statute allows us to have a planner. If we've been allocated budget, we're allowed to have, to allocate that money that's been allocated to us towards a planner. We don't have any real allocation to us. The township has some additional money set aside in other, but it's not allocated to this commission, so the township trustees would have had to make that decision. So what I wanted to know from all of you is whether we felt that a planner would make sense to look at this parcel, to consider the options. And also, you know, we just went through the senior housing part, project. And one of the things that I kept coming back to is they were able to get over the one hundred-foot setback from the residential to the business by having this small business parcel that was between the parcel that's ultimately becoming the senior housing and Mr. Bendoff's property. And I would hate, I don't know if that was an oversight on this board not to realize that and to try to do something to make sure as this condition or something that they had to have had it a hundred-foot back, or maybe it was contemplated. But those are the kind of things that run through my mind, that if this is zone B2, I wanted to make sure that there was nothing that I missed. And that's why I've spent two months now on this topic to try to look at it from as many avenues as I possibly could so that we could have a robust discussion tonight of this proposal. Ms. Krippe.
I think you did a fabulous job, Marcus. But I don't agree that the Comprehensive Plan speaks to enlarging the district. I believe in last night's meeting, the definition of enhancement was read out loud. And I don't look at enhancement as an addition or increasing space. I look at enhancement as a term for
Can we go back to the heat map?
Improving what is there, whether it's beautifying or, you know, that's the way I interpret enhancement.
And and I agree with you. And actually, Ms. Long's comment, one of them was, you know, look, one, the number, if you look at key points, the number one point to her was maintain or basically maintain the two-acre minimum lots. And then number three was enhance, and that does enhance me. And so I've really thought about that one, too. And one, I, I don't think that that's an order ranking. And two, this, I, but I do agree, I should say, but I do agree, no, the heat map one. But I do agree with the comment that, without doubt, I think that the most important thing within Hinkley is maintaining the two-acre lots. But I don't think that, when you look at that, you can read a document to create inherent conflicts. Normally, when you read a document, you try to look at it first in a way that doesn't necessarily create conflicts. And so I don't think that the idea that we strongly favor two-acre lots necessarily says that we can't rezone anything other than two-acre lots. There is certainly a strong push for two-acre lots, but there's other parts of the Comprehensive Plan that clearly within, show expansion of the B1 and clearly showing expansion of town center. And so I went to read those two as saying that there's inherent conflict in this document. So I think we got to read it in a way that there's not inherent conflict. The reason I come back to this is, I think that this is the definition, right? One of the things that we're working on right now is, you know, what is the definition of rural, right? That's one of the things that the steering committees said. And OHM has very clearly said, "I don't care what the definition is, just define it. Have some definition, whatever you want, and put that in the paper." Well, here we have, what does enhance mean? I don't know what enhance means. I look at this Comprehensive Plan, and there's, there are spots that says, that say that we want to improve the aesthetics. Maybe we want to have design considerations for town center. That's absolutely an enhancement of town center. But this is a definition. Enhance town center. "Hinkley Town Center is the social and civic hub of the township. Here, residents generally gather, generally want to see a higher level of quality buildings in public spaces and amenities, along with additional small-scale businesses to serve the community. Figure 2.4 shows the desire for both growth and preservation area, indicating a desire for some expansion while keeping the small-town character." That is what we've defined as, as enhancement. So I absolutely agree that enhancement doesn't necessarily mean expansion, but we have this document that, that defines what enhancement is. Or at least, that's how I would read this. Or at least that's how I would read this paragraph under the term enhanced town center.
How many people participated in that two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan? And, and wait. I don't have the number. I know it's a small, minimal number. So when you use percentages before of how many people were for it or how many people were against it. I think we have a great amount of percentage of folks who right now does not want to see a change.
And, and I absolutely agree in terms of percentages. In terms of total number, this is far more than what we had in public comments. Public comments, we had thirteen people voicing yes or no. Here, this is still one thirteen, even if it's sixty-something. And I'll also say, going back to the plan before this, which is, you know, again, very consistent in language. I think I saw six hundred and something participants.
Yes. One of, one of us, I, I can't remember what the number was.
Yeah, it was six hundred. And that's where this language started from, is that comprehensive plan.
It's in, in eighty-two and coming forward until two thousand fifteen. I mean, there's, was not that kind of discussion. Eighty-two is when the EPA was beginning to put pressure on septic systems. So committee really did spend a lot of time on enhancement of downtown, not knowing what was going to happen. And then we went, go to the next one. We figured, well, until they get water and sewers, which is, it was just, you know, it's, yes, it was brought up, yes, there was a question. But it really wasn't discussed in, in great detail as it was in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, fifty, end of fourteen into fifteen.
But what's interesting is the eighty-two and the ninety-three both have a very clear statement of no expansion.
I, I would like to tell you that, and, and I, I was, I have to go look and see if I can find some notes from it. A lot of that stuff came from the planners themselves. And we were just happy with it because there just wasn't, the, the. The people were concerned about traffic. Turn lanes. I'm saying this was a lot of vocal stuff. In the town, there wasn't that much discussion about the town center at that, at that point in time. If you know, there was a hardware store and some other stuff and I thought, that's enough. We got what we need here. And, you know, but as time goes on, things change and.
And I, I think that's unfortunately a shame because, you know, this is the document, this is the legal document that now concludes. What the two, what was supposed to happen in nineteen eighty-two, what was supposed to happen in nineteen ninety-three, what was supposed to happen in two thousand and three, and what was supposed to happen in two thousand and fifteen. This is that document. And whatever happened to arrive at those conclusions in the document is unfortunately somewhat immaterial. It's, it's just like the discussion that we would have of a zoning regulation. You know, we might have great intentions, but if we have a word in zoning regulations that is something different than what we wanted to achieve. And someone exploits that, we can't go back and say, well, that wasn't our intent and here's the discussion that we had. The, the final say is the document.
I think Cindy referenced the objectives of the comprehensive plan in Cindy's writing.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the next, go ahead. Keeps speaking. The one where the, this key points, I think, right here. So one of the ones that she references, the improved town center about limit expansion. And she interpreted that to mean no expansion. But that's not what that says. There's other words that were used in the other plans that said no expansion. This says limit expansion. I don't think that that statement is any different than the statement within the heat map, which also said basically controlled expansion.
Okay, but it doesn't mean rezone property that's already zoned R-one.
How else do you do expansion?
Well, build on what you have.
But the zoning has no ability to control whether something's built or not built on the B-two district. All that we can do is zone it to enable something.
But I'm just saying, I, my interpretation of that is not to expand the zoning beyond that. That's not my interpretation of this.
How would the, how would we as a zoning board have any ability to limit expansion? And do so, anything with that outside of through rezoning?
Conditional uses? I mean, I'm, I'm. I'm not sold on that saying. It's telling us to expand beyond what was done. With the, the school was still a school then. It wasn't even thought of to become a business. It was still residential.
But what about when you look at the future land use map and it is now B-two?
Well.
I mean, how do you reconcile your, your interpretation with that?
I don't know. I, I, I can't reconcile that. I, I, I wasn't.
And I think that's the.
You know?
Yeah.
I, I can't reconcile it, but I'm not in agreement with it either.
And I can't say that I'm personally agreeing with that. I don't think that we likely, if we polled everyone, that we would favor as much expansion along the last one-thirtieth. As the future land use measures. I don't know if we would favor this level of expansion. And that's, I think, one of the survey questions is essentially on this point. Because it is an important concept and I'm not so sure that this is correct. But this is what we have. This is the document that was signed. It was approved presumably by the steering committee that was involved in at that time. And it was voted on and approved by the township trustees of this. Regardless of my own personal feelings as to what I think should, should or should not, what this should or should not look like.
But that doesn't mean that I have to make a decision on something that's going to have a future effect. And, and, and use that. I mean, I, it should be considered, but it's not the driving motive here.
So what is?
Ms. Crew, what do you mean when you say it should be considered, you're saying?
I, I, I think you're, we're saying that we have to go by what's in the, that's my interpretation of what Marcus just delivered. That the comprehensive plan is this and we need to follow this. I don't see it that way. My interpretation is, is a bit different of it.
I would agree with you.
But his, he had an interpretation also.
Correct. I know.
And their, their opposite ends are divergence.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's what I said, if you recall, last meeting, everyone's interpretation and in their read of the document is different, correct? And, and I wasn't there in fifteen to know any of the backstories or any of that stuff. But I interpret it a little differently. And it doesn't mean that, yes, I have to consider this, but I also have to consider what people are out there speaking of. I don't, I didn't count the number of residents that wrote or complained. But I can.
There's the names. I counted them. I checked Mark Tom. I made sure. That's what, I, I actually did that.
I know. And I showed you the stuff that is on the neighborhood apps and the people that are vocal and about Hinkley and, and progress. So, you know, I, I'm just saying that, yes, we, you may have to consider it, yes, you know, and you'll have to look at what your interpretation is. And you'll have to figure out what, you know, if that is, if that is what we as a board want to do. Or is this where we want Hinkley to go? Is this what the people in Hinkley, is that what they want and how to go? I, for one, am very concerned if it goes to B-two. What Mr. Wilson can say, whatever he said about the controls and the conditional uses and all of that. But we had a very difficult time with those same controls with the senior housing. And I didn't, I wasn't on the board when the senior housing came before it. I have nothing to do with it. But I'm just saying, I don't want another huge blow-up among the community for something like this. I think this is something so important that we shouldn't take it lightly. And if it means saying, you know. No, see what happens in the future. I do think a lot is going on in the community. I think the steering committee. I mean, I know we have to make our decisions based on the two thousand and fifteen plan in front of us. I get all that. But I also know that, you know, the people are speaking to us as well. And I think we have to consider that. That's all. That's all.
I'll say, I'm not taking this lightly at all. This is, I, I.
You did an outstanding job, Marcus. I mean, that's.
It's a difficult, difficult decision to make. I'm, I just tried to look at, that's why I went all the way back to nineteen sixty. I was trying to find something. Go ahead, Mr. Strong.
So. In the ORC, it's been a few years.
Let me flip back, Justin.
It's been a few years since I've read it verbatim.
It's, it's the first, the, that one, yes.
So a comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is, is a tool. Built by the community. It is a tool. It's not a bible. It's, it's not something that gets passed and we turn around and immediately go and enforce and, and change rapidly. It's a tool. It's, it's one of many tools. Medina County Planning Commission is a tool. Residents in the township are a tool. Our own research, and you did, it's a great history lesson there. I, I think what I gathered from that history lesson is we're not sure what we want of, of a town center. Some years we want it to grow, some, some years we don't. Last time we wanted it to grow. Probably this time we won't. So I, I don't, when, when I look at, when I look at what you presented. While I appreciate it, it is just one of many inputs into this, this whole process. But you used the word conclude. I don't think it concludes anything. It just offers, you know, another avenue of information to us in the decision-making process. And then Ms. Crew, to just a, a point that you made, right? We get lots of feedback, lots of feedback. It's very fortunate that, that we've had the amount of feedback that we have here. Many years ago, when senior housing was a, a popular thing, the crowds in here were flown out the door. And it was a, a slightly angrier crew and, and angry because we want it and we don't. And, and so you have to make decisions based on the tools, based on, you know, just everything in, in, at, at the time. But, you know, what, what's unfortunate is for every resident that's here today, there is what? Three hundred, four hundred residents complacent, sitting at home. And I don't know whether they're for or against this. But I know the ones that are against it. And that's typical zoning to us. So again, why am I saying that? It's, this is, this, this whole process, it's built around the tools that give us, you know, what we need to make a, a decision.
Correct.
So I, I just want to say one thing, Mr. Strong, and, and thank you, you're absolutely correct on that. I spoke to two prosecutors. I tried to do research to try to find out what other sort of factors can be considered. You know, we heard at some point Duncan factors. Well, the Duncan factors are really, you know, that came as a, as an Ohio Supreme Court case, the Duncan. And that really has to do with when you have an actual plan in front of you and, and you're looking at that relative to the BCA and you're making decisions. So that's really not pertinent to us. But my, my point of that is there's really no written guidance anywhere as to what those factors are. The only thing that we have that is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and I agree, it's just a guide. It's something for us to use. But I will say it's a pretty important guide in that that is the one thing the legislator has told us to look at. And the courts have not, as far as I can tell, established any other factors for us to look at. There's been no other guidance with respect to. Again, what I've so far been able to identify, no other guidance for us to consider other than comprehensive plan. And that's why I think that the. Plan is more weighted than a lot of the other things that we can spoke, you know, speak about. I spoke about the well and the, the, the septic. I spoke about the blight issue. Again, those aren't addressed at all in the comprehensive plan. I was just trying to throw out other considerations for us to have as other, you know, features for us to look at.
You did a good job. I'm impressed. Very, a lot, you can tell a lot of work and, you know, thoughtful into that. So it's well-rounded. You know, personally, I sit here and I look at this town center. And again, I don't know whether we want it to expand or to shrink or just to stay the same, go, you know, buildings fall down. If that stays R-one, that, that, what, what's somebody going to do with this building?
They're going to sit on it for probably eight years.
It's going to sit, it's going to fall apart, right? Or it's going to get ripped down.
But the school would have to pay for that. They're not going to pay.
Well, I agree. That's, that's, that's the school's problem.
Well, the school said they were going to tear it down initially.
Said that they're not.
Yes, I know they have, but they, they should also meet with their obligation. They said they were going to tear it down and tear it down.
I absolutely agree. Unfortunately, we don't have any authority to force them to do that.
No, I agree, but I also agree, the building is old. Let's face it, how many companies are going to come in and use an old building? And they're not. It's not going to happen.
And they have to replace the road. We're beating the rain.
Just like, I don't know, but I, I'm just saying, realistically, they're, they're, I don't know of any, and I'm not a builder and I am not a developer. But I do go by lots of places, okay? And everybody raises and starts again. It's just commonplace in today's society. Probably environmentally, asbestos, I, that's huge. You know, I work downtown. I see many of these buildings coming down because of that. So I don't know. I, I, yeah, I don't know.
If it, I mean, if it stays residential, I mean, how many acres are we talking here?
It's six acres.
Six, you get two houses on there.
Well, well, you're looking at residential as in property.
Well, hear me through, Chris. Hear me through, because I'm with you on this.
Right.
Right? I don't see houses going on that, quite frankly, because you're going to get two. I don't see that happening. And for the amount of money you're going to pay for that property. And if the school doesn't rip that building down. A resident buying that, holy smokes. You, you're, you're better off, there's lots of land around here. That's a whole different problem with the, of all your houses going in, okay? But that's, we're not here to tackle that. So then I look at it, okay, it's R-one. It stays R-one. We don't do anything. They rip the building down. What is it going to become? You look at the things that, that in a residential, as you mentioned, in a residential area that are permitted non-residential uses. There's not many in there that, that I think fit in this thing. One of them is a school. Clearly, that's not going to stay. They, they've already moved. A church.
Preschool.
Cemetery.
You could do a preschool. Could be a church.
Cemetery.
We do need another cemetery.
Cemeteries is permitted. Golf course, a golf course. But we already found out with Skyland that apparently golf courses aren't needed around here, right? And we have two up there, up the road with a lot of acreage on it. So what happens when they, they figure out that they can make money off of that more than golfing? The pandemics.
They already have.
I know, I know. Right? So, so like, I'm looking at this list. It's like.
I know.
Government, government-owned or operated recreation areas. Okay, recreation, you know, maybe. That's about it. Public buildings, educational institutes, parks and.
But is it for us to decide that?
It's not. It's not.
It's not?
But I'm looking at this.
These are options. And that's why I, I said that, because they, these are other options.
Correct. And that's, that's, that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying. It's like, I look at this and I don't know what to decide on this thing because if you leave it as it is, it really, what can you use it for? I don't know. It doesn't seem, seem, it seems like the options are limited. You change it to R-two, I don't think that's what we need right now. I don't think we need more R-two in that area. What I'd prefer to see, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, he had me confused.
Maybe I'm recommending R-two. I don't know.
Information overload.
I know. B-two, you, you move it to, to, to B-two. So, so now you've introduced six acres of B-two in here. You still don't have water. You still don't have sewer. You got everything else going on. I'd like to see a bigger plan for what's going to happen in this township before I make a decision on whether I'm going to rezone this thing. Tell me, tell me, if we're going to do something down here, what's the bigger plan? How does this fit into the bigger plan?
Exactly. I would have liked to have seen something like, I have a developer lined up who would do this, this, and this. I think if, if I knew or had some inkling into the future use, but the unknown to me is scary.
Can I, I would, I would love to have had a developer here. We have a lot of undeveloped land within the B-two district and we have no control really of any of that. That's all zone B-two. So unless we're rezoning all of that R and then saying, look, we're not rezoning, we're, we're keeping an R-one until there's a plan in place and then we'll rezone it B-two if we like your plan. That's not really a, a, a model for zoning development, right? The way that we're controlling what's in our B-two district is through what are our permitted uses, what are our conditional uses? I would like us to do a full review of that quickly. I would also like us to look into whether we want some aesthetic regulations for the B-two district because it is historic and I'd like to preserve this as a historic district. The statute allows us to even have an architecture review committee. Maybe that's something that we look into, or maybe we just put that on ourselves as the architecture review committee because there's not that much going on. But it would be something to look at. And that would be how we control what happens within the B-two. Not by saying we're not rezoning anything or, you know, until we know what's going in there because there's. Not by saying, we're not rezoning anything or, you know, until we know what's going in there, because there's a lot of vacant property in the B2 district that we don't know what's going to go in there. I, I don't think that's a good approach. I think the approach is.
I, I said that when we started this thing, that I thought we should leave it alone. Have somebody come back with a plan, and it would be considered at that time.
Mr. Brown, do you want me to acknowledge him?
I think we've already had two public comments. We'll let them have another comment at the end, but I'd like to continue. If there are no other discussions, I would be more than willing to let someone make a motion, whichever motion you want. You can make a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or a motion to approve with modifications, if you had any modifications in place that you think of. You know, I don't.
First, before we do that, let me just say, I'm disappointed we don't have a full board or an alternate here.
What's the kind of waiting for that?
Yes.
Process.
Right. It's, it's, it's the process that we've started. We've already continued this once.
She explained all the process. Still be within your timeframe and have your remainder of the board and your alternate.
I think that we can continue. Do you?
We can continue.
We, I mean.
We're going to sit here one more time and have the same conversation.
Sorry, I meant that we can, I, I think we can do a motion. Um, you know, we had the option at the beginning here, we had two alternates. And I will say that, you know, those two alternates were removed from us. We then only got one alternate back. So this is the situation where, and we knew that this was potential as a result of that. And I don't think that we should stop business as a result of not having an alternate. We've never not had one of our alternates, had two alternates here before. So.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then, that we accept the proposal to change without going through all this to, to, uh, Highland School Board's district request to change the zoning district.
So it's a motion to.
To accept. Approve.
Any seconds? I'll second that. And I want to say, if it's a 2-2 tie, it's a no.
Well, then you need it.
Well, then it's a recommendation, real, because we're moving forward. If it's a, uh, 3-1 or otherwise, we're in a different position. But I called both of these.
Fisher?
Yes.
Crew?
No.
Manley?
No.
Spellman?
No.
Motion to recommend is to, we'll make a motion to, oh no, because we now need to, that was a motion to approve, that failed. We now need a motion to reject.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, send this to the trustees with the recommendation not to accept and leave it as, as is R1.
Perfect.
I second it.
Crew, seconds. Whoa.
Fisher?
No.
Uh, Crew?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Motion to recommend denial of the application, as passed. The short-term rentals, we're already at 8:41. I don't think that we want to continue that today.
No, I, I don't think we should continue it, but I think we should look at other things that are more pressing.
That was my next topic.
So.
Do we want to cross this one off and look at, again, there are a few areas that I'd like to look at. I'd like to look at the some front setbacks and conservation developments. I would like to look at the, um, conditional uses within the business districts. I would like to look at whether we want to incorporate an aesthetic, and I don't know what that would look like yet, an aesthetic review committee. I think all three of those have far greater impact on the township than short-term rentals. So I would be okay with moving short-term rentals and looking at any one or all of those. If there's another topic that you guys would like to discuss, certainly, okay.
I think we came to a, a agreement on the definition of short-term rentals, didn't we?
Yeah.
No, we did.
We did.
We were.
So.
And we worked through a bunch of language, and we only had a few tweaks.
But that, but that was because we were trying to put them someplace. But as far as their definition, I think we did come to an agreement.
There's really no purpose to have a definition in the book if it doesn't tie into anything in the book. Right? Because other, you just have a floating definition.
I hate to put aside all that work.
Well, you're not extra, you're putting it aside, you're not throwing it out.
That's true. That's true. We're tabling it, but, okay. Yeah, I'm.
What, what topic would you like to discuss? That's the question. Open to that. And I think there's a lot of topics that are important.
I would like to look at the stuff in our B2. I would like to look at those.
Not just in B2. I'd like to look at B1, B2. We're, if it's.
Yes, I'm sorry. Both of them. I'm sorry, both of them. Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with that.
So do you guys agree that that's a topic that we can look at next?
Sure.
And you should have a results from the, the surveys sometime in June, so you certainly could get into those questions in July and sort through. What, what?
I, I have something, um, that we're going to be considering in June that I would like to pass around.
Sure.
Okay, this is a, a new subdivision with 24.
Is this the Stony Hill?
Stony Hill.
Okay.
Aren't they tabled?
Do you need to leave quickly or?
No.
Okay, because we have, that, that will be the next topic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Once we finish, so the next item of business that we put on is a review of the business, B1 district, B2 district. A review of the conditional uses and permitted uses within each one of those districts. Is that? Go ahead.
I'd like to throw another one on there. If in 2022 we're opposed to senior housing, I sure would like to, uh, you know, look at something uh, such as in-law suites. I know that's been a contentious topic in the past, but my goodness, can we finally give, uh, the agent community here an option uh, besides move out, move away?
There's an apartment down the road.
You can do things to avoid that. It's like everything else.
Well, if you look at the in-law suites, then you look at duplexes or.
If you're Mr. Smollett, willing to spearhead the proposals on language on that one, I would be okay.
Bring in stuff that I proposed years ago.
I would be perfectly. So we will look, next time I'll put on the schedule for business. Um, a start, we'll just do an introduction next time to kind of get our minds around the B1, B2 districts. And then we'll also have a, just a, again, an initial discussion on the, um, mother-in-law suites.
Mother-in-law? Okay, all right. Sorry.
Not necessarily mother-in-law. In-law suites.
I guess I took a first. Sorry.
In-law suites and, uh, B1, B2. Perfect.
Did you guys in the last two years, have you reviewed anything with in-law suites?
No, we had it on the schedule.
No, we did. We talked.
We have, we have.
We talked and then, yeah.
Do you remember roughly when, so I can maybe go back and just see what the, the points of contention or?
I think it was ended in 2020. Um, it was justified, Mr. Marcy, low to remove it from the agenda, probably mid-2020.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just rough estimate from memory.
So those two topics, I think those are nice topics, uh, for us to discuss. Next time, Mr. Smollett, I look forward to any of your work on in-law suites. That's a, it's a difficult topic. And the B1, B2, I think that that's much more straightforward, easy to.
As they were discussing.
Permitted and conditional use to those areas. All right. So the next topic is a concept plan for Stony Hill Road. If you'd like to go ahead and make any discussion that you have.
The zoning department, uh, sent their report into the county, and I made copies of that for, for you, and, uh, this is something you'll be considering in June. They were going to come in in May, but with all we had on the agenda, they decided to wait until June.
Thank you.
Does this back up to the golf course development?
It does. If you remember, there were.
I know, that's why, yes.
Backed up.
Right.
And we were able to get a cul-de-sac on the one, the one that's adjacent to the golf course now. They're also adding a cul-de-sac of their, the former proposal, which might have been by a different developer.
That's correct.
This proposal shifts the road significantly down away from the corner, because if you remember.
You mean on the curve?
Along the curve.
Okay.
If you remember, Mattingly became Stony Hill, and the street was very close to that upper corner.
Right.
And we were concerned about the tightness of the corner and accidents along the road. This proposal shifts that significantly down. The other, sorry, I didn't mean to steal your.
No.
The, the other comment that I'll make is, if you remember before, there was an existing pond, and it's shown here as well. That existing pond, the prior proposal had pulled that out of the subdivision and made a standalone lot
Lot, right.
that was adjacent to Stony Hill. And our concern with that was the HOA really had no control over that. So there'd be easements to that lot, but it wouldn't be part of the subdivision. The subdivision really no abilities to make sure that that was adequately maintained, given that that was supposed to capture their runoff. This proposal now shrinks the size of that pond. It puts the road over top of on the existing part of the pond, um, but the pond does remain within the subdivision. So I think that those are the two major items. Um, there are obviously wetland issues, I think, uh, potentially with the subdivision.
Well, your map, uh, we drew, we made a colored map for you. There's a lot of repairing setbacks. There's three oil wells and, uh, there's some wetland issues. So, I mean, as far as the zoning department is concerned, the, the lots meet the requirements for two acre or more and 175 foot frontage and 175 foot at the building. There, you know, the building line where you put a house. Actually, it's a little bit like Kabbalah. I mean, it's, it's not our problem if they have repairing setbacks and where they're going to set the house. That's, that's something they've got to work around. But as far as zoning goes, it's, the lots are, uh, legal. Lots.
And this is within R1 district. These are two acre minimum lines.
Yeah, and that's different than the, the one that this applies to in Western 30s, because that's R2.
Correct.
But this is R1.
Right.
So the Medina County Planning Commission has, uh, requested comments on this plan from, Mr. Wilson, I assume would provide comments. Often they also ask for trustee comments, and then they ask for other comments. So if there are any comments on this plan that you would like me to relay to the, um, the planning commission, I'm happy to do so. I personally don't have very many comments. I think that the repairing setbacks and wetlands will be addressed by the EPA, and that's always flagged anyway by planning services. So I don't think we need to make too much about that. There's a cul-de-sac here, which is also always been our concerns. And then they've shifted the street relative to that corner of Stony Hill and Mattingly. So I don't think there's this.
Is there still the possibility of that other development just up on Stony Hill? Remember, there was two of them coming in.
I don't know, but.
You remember that was the, yeah, there was the two on the Stony Hill and the golf course.
Well, the golf course is.
That one's done. Right. But I re. Yeah.
And Stony Hill are a matic. You'd have to.
Well, it was either, it was, yeah, Stony Hill, Mattingly, I, because I remember that. That was the discussion about having two of them open up onto this road.
Wasn't that, I thought that was squashed. I thought Chris Colina squashed that because he didn't want a main, like a, a speedway.
That's.
So was that what you were talking about?
This one and this, that's the Pine Hill and this one were coming together. And you could have had a passenger street there. And the concern there is people would fly down that road as a shortcut to.
Right. And Chris Colina got it squashed by trust or approval to say that they didn't want a.
Yeah.
And on that point, our comprehensive plan actually helped us, so. I know.
Let's stay away from that. But tonight.
Well, no, I really, I really actually, because the survey's coming out, I think it's important to note how critical this is to, to what we're doing.
I know. Well, that's what I made that comment last week about the survey.
Right.
And I, unfortunately, I missed that last steering committee meeting. So I'm, I'm anxious to see the questions. I'm anxious.
We're in half hours of excitement.
I was in bed before it even started that night.
We are almost finished. I would like to get finished by nine, so we do not have to make a motion to extend for once during my term as chair, if that was.
Shut up.
Great. So I have, at this time, I've heard of no one seeking comments on this plan. So I won't, uh, provide any comments to planning services.
Can, can we have time to digest if we have something?
If you have something, okay, now, I think it's by the 15th.
Yeah.
So if you provide them to Suzanne within this week, I'd appreciate it, because I always like to compile everything on the weekend.
Okay.
Before. So if you have anything, just send it to Suzanne and she'll send it to me. Any other comments? Perfect. All right. Mr. Manley, is there any update on the comprehensive plan that you'd like to provide this time?
Uh, I think we finally agreed to the questions.
I think you guys did a great job, actually.
Well, they talked about the, uh, 6:30 to, what, 25 to 11. And our over 10 check is what, in the mail?
Yeah, I wish they would have provided us all dinner that night. I apologize.
We couldn't even, we couldn't even go to Foster's because it was closed. Anyhow, uh, what was, I think what was interesting, uh, that you might find of interest is approximately six, well, six or seven is the best I recall, members of the committee finally dawned on them.
Keep conversations down because there's microphones and they pick up everything. And then poor Judy has to do a dictation basically of all of this. So. Go ahead, Mr. Manley.
Uh, anyhow, a number of, of members of the committee, it dawned on them that we were supposed to only pick on, thanks to Jack Fliddick, who kept every, tried to keep everybody on. And they asked the question that many might want to ask later is, why did we spend this money for these couple pages? But we'll see what happens. The public wants to get some opportunity to, uh, give, give us their opinion or vent, whichever. And, uh, when, when is it going out? In the next couple of days, isn't it?
It should go out early next week.
Okay. And, uh, right now, they anticipate that the, the information will be made public on June 14th. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we'll have some better idea of, uh, what, where we are at it. And, you know, talk it up. I, I I really, they're, they're, they're hoping to get 25, 30%. I, 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 I would hope they would get at least that, but we'll see. I, I know based on a lot of ones I am, you know, people certainly, people really aren't complacent and everything, you know, they're, they're busy, their lives are busy. And as far as they're concerned, everything is working okay. And so they just don't participate.
Have they set a deadline?
That's not a negative comment. I mean, that, you know, they, they have every right not to do anything, just like everybody has a right to come down and voice their opinion.
Right.
And for those that didn't hear, May 27th is going to be the deadline for submission of the comments. Um, I do definitely want to thank the steering committee for what they've done so far in the creation of these questions. I think it was, you know.
It wa, it was a very interesting group. Again, there's been arguments of how they picked the people, and I've heard the different things that they picked from here and there, but it was a very interesting group and probably the most diverse group as far as occupations and where they live that I can remember. And the first one that I was involved in a little bit was 82, and there I wasn't that deeply involved. In the future, and ones after that, I was, I went to probably every meeting.
And I, I will be honest, I had my doubts after the first few meetings as to what would be pulled together, but you guys did a great job at the last meeting, syncing up everything, formulating questions. I thought it was great.
Well, I think it finally dawned on them that, you know, some of these questions that they had were zoning questions or things that have already been in the plan that there's, that hadn't been broken, you know? We, if you accept an audit, as you've heard me say, is, you know, we look at the things that, that we said we do, and those that have kind of progressed the way we thought they might, we'll ignore those. Then we'll look at the other ones that didn't. Well, let's kind of separate those into where are they absolutely opposite of what we thought they would be, and let's concentrate in that area. And eventually we kind of got along that road. It took a while.
Thank you. Ms. Crew, anything else before we conclude?
No, no, thank you.
Nothing. My final statement is, I want to publicly thank Judy for the minutes that have been provided uh, through the public hearing, through our last meeting, through this public hearing, or the, the, um, this current meeting. These meetings have been very long. Uh, she is essentially transcribing the, all of our conversations. That's more than what you see a lot of townships do with respect to minutes. A lot of times it's a very brief summary, but we are trying to preserve as much of the record as we can. And I think that that is. And I think that that is a huge acknowledgement to the township and to Judy for doing all of this. I know how long it can take you to transcribe it.
And this is public, this is public employee recognition month.
Oh, I didn't know that, but there you go. Perfect timing. So we'll take, oh, we have public comments, so we'll have public comments. Sorry, we might have to continue after this. Public comments, are there any public comments? Mr. Pearl, go ahead. We voted no on public comments.
Mr. Pearl, you have two minutes.
Yes, come on, Mr. Pearl, please.
Call us, Mike, he's over.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my hand was not up.
Okay. That whatever, great technology issue, we'll take it. If there are no other public comments.
Move for.
Move to a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine.
So moved.
Moved by Manley, seconded by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, they got eight fifty-nine.